Thing in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the November 27th, 2023 Tuolton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Sacco tonight. All right, that brings us, we have four announcements. Our first announcement is the introduction of a new police officer. Chief, come on up. Must be super new. He's got no equipment.
Not yet, we're working on that. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, good evening. I am pleased to introduce tonight Officer Jake Ferenger. Jake is the newest member of the Police Department who started with the department on November 6th. Jake comes to us from the real estate industry where he was a real estate agent in the Newburgh area. Originally from Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Jake is a graduate of Coeur d'Alene High School. Attended the University of Idaho and North Idaho College where he earned his EMS certificate. So, he's got a little bit of an EMS background and now we're working on the police background. Jake is married and has two sons Hudson and Xander, and Xander is two months old. As I was prepared to give Jake his final job offer, he called me and said, "Ah, I gotta wait a minute. My wife just went into labor." So, we did that via email. We got him squared away and we were excited once mama and baby were healthy and feeling good. Jake is currently assigned to our Training Division where he'll be for the next month or so. He'll head to the Academy at the end of January and will graduate in May and we're excited to get him back and get him on the road. So, please join me in welcoming Jake to the Tuolton Police Department.
Welcome Jake.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything you'd like to say?
I'm excited for the opportunity. It's a great community and a great city and I'm excited.
What made you change career path?
Um, I wanted a good set schedule and more time with my kids when I'm off of work. Obviously, real estate, you're pretty much always on call. Can't really be present with a two-month-old and two-year-old. I really want to be there with them, so.
And how are your skills at rowing a pumpkin? We'll find out next year. Don't worry, because there's this little ritual the Tuolton Police have when it comes to pumpkin regatta time where the young officers are the ones who get picked for the pumpkins and rowing. Because they did terrific this year, first and second place.
Jake's another one that's really into fitness, so we know he'll do just fine.
Looking forward to it.
All right, anyone else like to say hello to Jake?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And you said at the Academy?
End of January.
End of January, okay, all right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for selecting our department. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next new employee introduction is part of our Parks Department. Where is? Is it? This is for Kira? Okay. We have, I just said two parks, yeah. Parks Maintenance Parks. Rich, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I'm Rich Mueller, Parks Planning and Development Manager. I'm pleased to introduce Kara Heine, Project Manager, who began November 13th and will be working on the Parks Bond project planning, design, and implementation. That includes trail development, waterfront access, field and park improvements. Kara recently worked at Pacific University as Head of Athletic Facility Operations where she managed multiple facility and field projects as well as ongoing maintenance. She worked in event management at University of Washington and Oregon State University as well as for the Parks Department for the city of Hillsborough. Kara possesses a Bachelor in Business Administration from Oregon State University, a Master's in Inner Collegic Athletics and Leadership from University of Washington, and she has credits toward an Education and Leadership Doctrine at Pacific University. Kara's guiding core values are daily commitments to excellence, continuous personal growth, and building of community. With that, please join me in welcoming Kara to Tuolton.
Welcome. Where's yours? Do you want to say something?
Hi, everyone. I'm glad and happy to be here. I'm excited to get on board and Rich has been a great supervisor so far and the Parks Department has been really welcoming and just really excited to get going. And I love Tuolton. It's a beautiful city and so just thank you for welcoming me here.
Well, thank you for taking this position. You're gonna be a very popular person. Whether you like it or not, over the next few years, because lots of folks have lots of... They voted overwhelmingly for this Parks Bond and they're looking forward to a lot of the projects. They saw what happened with Tuolton moving forward with our transportation planning and those projects that rolled out. So, they're expecting great things from you. It sounds like we're not gonna have any problems with that and looking forward to all these new parks and the Veterans Plaza and all the new trails. So, thank you for joining our team.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Now, Tom. So, we have two new employees, two new Parks Maintenance Technicians. This is Tom Steiger. Welcome, Tom.
You guys ready? Good evening, Mayor and Tuolton City Council members. My name is Tom Steiger. I'm the Parks Maintenance Manager for the city of Tuolton. It's my pleasure to introduce you to two new Parks Maintenance Staff. First off, to my left is Joshua Murch. Josh is a Parks Maintenance Tech One. Josh has worked for us as a seasonal worker for two seasons. He also did a stint for about 10 weeks in the Streets Department. So, he knows Tuolton well. He knows our parks well and he fit in wonderfully with our team. Josh is assigned to Tuolton Community Park and the surrounding areas. Over the next few months, Josh will be assisting with fall leaf cleanup, planting street trees, and will soon be attending a Playground Maintenance Class in December. To my right is Nicholas Klotzback. He goes by Nico. Let's just leave it at that. We'll stick with Nico. Nico is also a Parks Maintenance Tech One. Nico comes to us with six years of experience from Tuolton Hills Parks and Recreation District and then also six years in the Coos Bay Area as a Sawline Operator and a Sawmill Operation. Nico's assigned to Jergens Park and the surrounding areas around Jergens Park. Very similarly, over the next few months, Nico will be assisting with fall leaf cleanup, street tree planting, and attending a Playground Maintenance Class in December. I am very pleased I have both of these guys on our team and so far they're fitting in extremely well.
Do you'd like to say something on both of you? Nico?
I'm a man of few words, but I'd just like to say thanks for the opportunity. I'll make the parks look good.
Joshua?
I am also a man of few words. But I look forward to keeping the parks as beautiful as they have been.
All right. I would not want to be the person that has to keep up on the leaves in Tuolton Community Park. You've got it easy at Jergens.
There's still a few leaves out there.
I live near Jergens. There's a lot less leaves. But welcome to you both. The, as Tom has probably told you, people really value our parks here in Tuolton. What Tuolton City Council uses all the time is, you know, parks and the library are the two biggest assets the residents of our community value and really enjoy using. They're looking forward to expand the parks, so there'll be more parks for you to maintain here soon. But thanks for joining the team and hopefully we'll, you know, see you for here, years and years and years in your career. And you end up being maybe in Tom's position one day. But this is a fantastic place to work. Hopefully you got the invite for the Employee Appreciation Breakfast. They're gonna be there, all right? With all the sausage and bacon you can eat proudly. So, non-meat side, I mean, sorry, the meat side, but, you know, we got other options if you don't like that. Looking forward to seeing you there and welcome to Tuolton.
Thank you for your continued and ongoing support. We really do appreciate it and maintenance. We hear it, we feel it. It really motivates us to continue to do good work.
Joshua's got also deal with a lot more pickled oil people.
There was 50 people by there when I drove by there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, the other night it was packed since the weather's been so good.
Welcome aboard, you guys. I wasn't sure if they were your bodyguards or the new.
Come on, boys, we're leaving.
All right, our final employee introduction tonight is Heidi Stanley. Welcome Megan and Heidi.
Hello, everybody. I am Megan George, your Deputy City Manager, and I am here to introduce Heidi Stanley, our new, brand-new Creative Communications and Marketing Program Manager. So, Heidi has 17-plus years of experience in marketing and creative communications. She comes to us from Portland Community College, before then the World of Speed, as well as Pizzacato Pizza. She's got a wide range of experience. Let's see, what else? This is the first time Tuolton has had a position that's 100% dedicated to communication, so I am thrilled. This is only week, this is the beginning of Week Three for Heidi and we had a holiday in there, but already she has had a tremendous impact on our workload. And I think that you'll find with adding this position and with Heidi specifically, we'll have the ability not just to expand on our communication work, but enhance it. So, she is gonna be responsible for our website, our social media platforms, paid advertising, marketing the community and the region and further, telling the story of Tuolton. She'll also have a few major projects coming up, including the redesign of our website, which was something that we added in this year's budget package. So, she's gonna be quite busy. So, with that, I'll leave it there, but welcome Heidi.
Welcome Heidi.
Thank you.
Where's yours?
Yeah, I'm happy to be here. It's been such a warm and welcoming community so far and excited to just make things really seamless and efficient and user-friendly for everyone and hopefully get some great communications out to the community, so happy to be here.
Well, welcome. I got one email from you already.
Yes.
For the newsletter. I'm looking at your badge. Could you make the font smaller on that? How much did you fit on that?
Anything is possible with a graphic designer.
That's the tiniest font I've seen on the seat. Yeah, long title. Well, welcome. Yeah, it's, one of the thing we have made a commitment to is community outreach and to flow information out to our community both ways. So, to have someone who's dedicated to it is super important to us. You know, when things get tough and the community gets a little annoyed with some things that might be, you know, occurring in the community, you know, we want to have that channel going that we can always hear what's going back and forth and still be able to discuss and not feel, you know, the community is being ignored or we're blowing them off or if there's something where, you know, we've got to fine-tune our message if we're off or our message isn't getting, you know, landing the right way. I look forward to listening to your advice how to do better.
Yeah, I'm excited to do that.
All right, well, welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here or in the Zoom who would like to address the City Council, this would be the appropriate time. One of the things I'm going to do is, for those folks in Zoom, to avoid some of the things that are happening in Zoom, I'll ask probably your name and what city you live in, just to make sure, because this happened again at King City and happened to the Arts and Culture Committee in West Lynn with the Zoom people coming in with saying inappropriate and racist things. So, I know who Brett is, so. I'll start with Brett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I can't turn my video on, but it got stopped, but I can talk, so.
Yeah, I know your voice, too. That's definitely Brett.
Oh, here we go. There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Brett Hamilton. I live and work in Tuolton. And it's great to see that the Climate Action Plan is advocating for actively enforcing the street tree ordinance and updating the code to increase planer width to five feet. That will provide more choices for larger trees and more shade. And I love it because we only have about three feet at our house, so we had a really short list of trees to pick out. There is one part of the Climate Action Plan, however, that I am concerned about, specifically Section 4.5.3, requiring replacing gas furnaces with electric heat pumps when they fail. Switching a house from natural gas to an air-source heat pump has some downsides that I'd like to address. First is that the added reliance on the electrical grid and the lack of backup energy options during a power failure. And as your consultant said tonight about winter storms, everybody should have some kind of backup heat. Also, heat pumps put out less heat than a gas furnace, so their runtimes are longer. And the air coming out of the registers is cooler than a furnace, so it feels a bit drafty when it's running. Heat pumps also require more airflow and larger duct sizes, so forcing people to switch to a heat pump when their furnace fails, they might also be forced to replace their existing ductwork. And depending on when their ducts, where their ducts are located, that can be an expensive and disruptive project. Instead of just swapping out a gas furnace for a more efficient unit, they now have a surprise construction expense. And those downsides are carried by the owner, but there's an additional downside that will be borne by their neighbors, and that's noise. Air-source heat pumps, as outlined in the Climate Action Plan, have an outdoor compressor similar to an air conditioner. And although new units are quieter than older ones, they are not silent. And Tuolton has five-foot setbacks in residential side yards and the code allows mechanical units to encroach two feet into that setback. So, your neighbor's new heat pump could be three feet from your property line and eight feet from your bedroom wall. So, even the quietest new scroll-type compressors typically make a clunk when they start up. So, if you're in a higher density zone like RML, which is where we're located, hearing multiple compressors rumble day and night, even in the winter when it used to be quiet, I think that's a serious drawback. So, I would ask the council not to not plan to enforce, force people to switch to something that has these downsides. Additionally, I just learned tonight when the consultant was talking about natural gas, power generation becoming more expensive than renewables. I'm wondering if at some point there might be like a glut of natural gas in the system, like if demand is that low. And since it's a byproduct of fossil fuel drilling, I would rather we get to burn it in our house than have some oil field flare it just to get rid of it, kind of like a farmer forced to dump their crops into the ground because the market isn't there for it. Perhaps another solution is geothermal, which is twice as efficient as air-source heat pumps and can do air conditioning and heating with no outdoor noise. And it lasts longer than heat pumps because it's not exposed to the elements. The only downside I see with that is cost for the installation. So, maybe the city has a way to help make geothermal affordable. So, either way, I would like to see that the Climate Action Plan mentions geothermal as a solution. Thank you very much.
Thanks Brett. Is there anyone else? Anyone in the room? Nope, still here. Just joining, okay. Going once? Twice, yeah. All right, let's move on. All right, that brings us to the Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of Item Number One, Consideration of Approval of the Work Session Regular Meeting Minutes of November 13th, 2023. Item Two, Consideration of Resolution Number 5737-23, Increasing the Construction Contract Authorization Authorization Amount for the Highway 99W, 24th Avenue to Pony Ridge Neighborhood Project, part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Program. Item Number Three, Consideration of Resolution Number 5738-23, Declaring Certain Art Installations as Surplus Property and Authorizing a Loan of Installation. Item Number Four, Consideration of Resolution Number 5740-23, Authorizing Solid Waste and Recycling Rate Adjustments Effective January 1st, 2024, and Rescinding Resolution Number 5664-23. Item Number Five, Consideration of Resolution Number 5741-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Commission for the Blind for Mutual Assistance and Cooperation in the Establishment, Operation, and Maintenance of Exclusive Refreshment, Concession, and Vending Services at the City of Tuolton Facilities. And finally, Item Number Six, Consideration Number Resolution 5743-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Opt the City Out of DuPont and 3M Class Action Settlements Related to Drinking Water Contamination. Are there any items on the consent agenda that someone would like to pull tonight?
I have a question, a parliamentary process. I'm gonna be voting, not in favor of one of these resolutions here, so how does that work?
You have to pull.
Okay, so then I will ask to pull out the rate increase effective for solid waste recycling. I'd like to get that pulled.
Okay. So, Item Number Four, we pulled from the consent agenda and heard later tonight. Any other items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item Four as read.
Second?
I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda as read with the exception of Item Number Four, which we heard separately later tonight. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. That brings us to General Business. Item Number One, Consideration of Resolution Number 5742-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Sign an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to participate as a member of the Regional Water Providers Consortium. Rachel. Welcome. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening. I need this. Make sure this works. Alrighty. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do the slides. Thank you. I'm Rachel Sykes, Public Works Director here for the city. And tonight I am bringing forward an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Water Providers Consortium for your approval. Basically, that is a fancy way of saying that updates and revisions have been made to the IGA and in order to remain a party to the agreement and essentially a member of the consortium, council must formally approve the new version of the IGA. But we thought this would be a good time. Before we seek your approval and get to the IGA, I would share a brief overview of the consortium, including what it is, what it does, and how Tuolton is involved. Oh, boy. Bates, I might need your help after all. There we go. Thank you. So, first I'll start with a little bit of regional water providers consortium history and structure. So, the city has been a member of the Regional Water Providers Consortium since its inception in 1997, so it's been around for a while. The consortium was originally formed around regional water supply issues, bringing providers together from the tri-county area, Multnomah, Washington, Clackamas Counties, to ensure cohesive strategies were in place for meeting the region's water needs for the long term. In 1997, they were planning through the year 2050. So, over the years, the underlying goal of regional connectivity and collaboration for water supply has not changed, but the consortium continues to take on new programming to address common water-related challenges, to share resources and collaborate on solution amongst the members. The consortium is housed in the city of Portland and currently has four staff members that administer the group and carry out projects and programs. And there are currently 25 members of the RWPC. This includes cities and water districts alike. So, the structure shown on the slide is the current makeup of the consortium. So, it starts at the top with the Consortium Board, which sets direction and makes policy decisions for consortium staff and committee work. All members of the consortium have an elected official that sits on the board. Our counselor, Brooks, is our representative from Tuolton. She sits on the board and was board president last year. There are three subcommittees that are kind of at the bottom there. There's a few pieces in between that kind of are a bridge between the committees that do the work and the board that sets the direction. So, the three subcommittees that Public Works Division staff are involved in include the Communicators Network, Conservation Committee, and Emergency Planning Committee. So, I'd like to give a little bit of information about our involvement with each of these groups. So, first up is the Communicators Network. This group aims to create consistent messaging and outreach that can be utilized by all members on a wide variety of topics related to water, on many platforms, and in many languages. Everything from information on how to check your toilet for leaks, water quality information, and emergency preparedness are shared out to members through easy-to-use toolkits, so we can kind of pick and choose from things that the consortium has created for us to push out onto our own platforms. You've likely seen our use of these toolkits on the city's website and social media platforms. The Communicators Network heads up educational outreach as well to youth through school and assembly programs and involvement, and they put on the annual Children's Clean Water Festival each year, both of which are open and promoted to Tuolton schools. The consortium partners with local news and media outlets to promote seasonal campaigns. And Bates, if you would roll the video, here's one example that you may have seen on K2 News, but there are many of these that are out and available on radio, on Trimate buses, and on TV.
The greatest waste of water is watering too much too often. Use water wisely this summer by mowing your lawn less often. Taller grass holds moisture in longer between waterings. Get more water-wise gardening tips at regionalh2o.org.
So, just short clips like that. We don't need to say it twice, but, so just clips like that that you may have seen are promoted and put on by the consortium and their staff members put that together. Next slide is the Conservation Committee. So, this is another subgroup that provides information, tips, tools, and outreach content for members to promote conservation practices throughout their communities. The Weekly Watering Number is one prime example of a tool that we promote in Tuolton. People are encouraged to sign up. It's administered through the consortium and they receive information each week based on the weather regarding how much water they should set their irrigation to. It gives information on how to set your irrigation so you can water wisely. In addition, the consortium offers a number of videos and how-to guides that can be used for household leak detection, installation of smart water devices, and rebates that may be available. The city, we purchased testing strips, faucet aerators, shower timers, and other items from the consortium at a low cost. They buy these things in bulk and then offer them to all members. And we pass these items out at city events and offer them to residents that we may encounter experiencing a leak or a high water bill. We also use them in our water distribution team. Staff will use the die strips and things like that. While the city does not have a formalized conservation program, all of this information is linked on our webpage and we consider the consortium's tools to be a good extension that we can point residents to if they're looking for some programming. Next slide. I'm gonna put this down because this is not working. Next is the Emergency Planning Committee. So, as a critical resource for public health and safety, the provision of water during a natural disaster or other emergency event is a key cornerstone that has emerged as a role the consortium plays to promote consistent response from water agencies across our region. This committee has two aims. So, the first is the promotion of frameworks regarding response to emergencies affecting water. So, not necessarily just a big earthquake like we think of the big one, but everything in between. So, things like curtailment events if we are having a water shortage, boil water notices that happen if there's contamination to our water supplies or systems, or even a chlorine shortage like we experienced in 2020. Bringing together water agencies to discuss our response, including communication, resiliency tools, interconnectedness amongst water systems, and resource sharing is extremely helpful when something does happen. Knowing that we have had those conversations, have thought things through before an event occurs is very valuable time spent. The consortium sponsors tabletop exercises and has brought in folks from other agencies, such as the Oregon Department of Emergency Management and Oregon Department of Energy, to discuss how these agencies intertwine with us as water providers. The tabletop exercises are essentially like role-playing of something that might happen and how we would respond and then they throw different things your way. It's a really good teamwork exercise, so we're grateful that the consortium puts these on. The second piece of the Emergency Planning Committee is outreach to people to promote their own emergency preparedness because you can't just rely on the city in times of need like this. So, the consortium has a whole bunch of campaigns similar to what I mentioned when I discussed the Communicators Network that they put out, but also that we utilize and promote here at the city. A number of how-to videos have been created, showing people how to get water from their water heaters if they need it, how to store emergency water in your home, and how to treat non-podable water in case you need to. This is also pushed out through local news media shows like Good Day Oregon. I have a link. It's like a five-minute video, so I'll spare you. If you need to, if you have an interest in looking at these videos, I would encourage you to go on to the YouTube channel. There's a whole bunch of videos and they have things translated into, I want to say, seven or eight different languages, which is really valuable because we don't necessarily. seven or eight different languages, which is really valuable, because we don't necessarily have the resources or capability of doing that here in the city. Next slide, please. So while not necessarily a subcommittee, I would be remiss if I did not touch on the operational networking and resource sharing that the consortium has afforded us here in the city of Tuolatin. Regional water provision is something that I believe really strongly in, and as a network of separate water providers that are all bordering one another, as shown on the map, collaboration is key for efficiencies, knowledge transfer, and most important, resiliency. I've met a number of people that are experts in their field. I am not an expert in water, because the city Public Works Department does a lot more than just provide water, so it's been really beneficial for us to have those links with people that are truly experts in water treatment, distribution, water quality, that we can lean on for information. It offers us the opportunity to network, share ideas, gather valuable information, and have access to resources that are far greater than what we can do alone internally. With 25 members, we are sure to have someone in the regional water providers network that can help us when we ask, "How are other cities doing that?", or "I wonder if anyone else is experiencing this problem." So that's one of the things internally that I'm most grateful for as being a member of the consortium. They also push out a lot of good information about grant opportunities or programs that the city can participate in, that we maybe wouldn't otherwise know about. So it's a really nice way for us to get information about things that we should be pursuing. Okay, next slide. So now that I've given you the brief spiel about the Regional Water Providers Consortium, the IGA. So the consortium has worked diligently over the past year to update the IGA that governs the group. So the IGA had not been updated since 2005, so a refresh was due. Consortium staff and members have conducted a review and update of the language, and notable updates to the IGA include, but are not necessarily limited to, an expansion of membership types, allowing more agencies to join the consortium. This is aimed at new members outside of that tri-county regional area, Columbia County, Yamhill County, Clark County even, so this could broaden the membership. There's updates to a number of outdated references to regional plans and other rules and regulations that have definitely changed since 2005. There's a new obligation for the board to maintain a strategic plan that guides consortium work. They're moving away from a regional supply plan. That was how the consortium first started, was based on this regional supply plan, and they're moving away from that and then moving into more of a strategic plan, because the scope of their kind of programming has broadened. And there's updates with the IGA, in the IGA, to align with the strategic plan, the consortium's mission and values. In reviewing the IGA, I don't feel that any of the updates alter the city of Tuolatin's involvement with the consortium and does not directly affect our dues to participate as a member in the group. Broadening the membership could potentially bring our dues down. Just depends. The language was reviewed by legal counsel, offered by consortium member Oak Lodge Water. They're over there in Milwaukee, and then it was presented to the Regional Water Providers Board for approval. They unanimously approved the IGA at their October 4 meeting. So next step is bringing it. Every member is a signatory to the IGA, so all 25 members need to re-sign. So I'm sure a lot of this presentation is probably happening in other member cities as well. So that is why we are here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions for Rachel.
The new members, are those the associate members that are mentioned?
Yeah, so I'm fairly certain that the associate membership is for those water districts or communities that are outside of that Washington, Clackamas, Multnomah area. I think there's been more conversations, and it's been done informally, because I know the city of Scaphus and the city of Newburgh are both members of the consortium, and they've, I think, put together a due structure that's been in place informally, and they're looking to formalize that due structure.
So is it a lesser due?
I believe so.
So and then do these people get a full vote, just like a full member?
I believe they do, but there's some shifting of the executive committee.
Okay.
But I'd have to look into that to see if they get our voting number.
This is a great organization, and I'm getting to something here on the... Kevin might want to weigh in, but on the legal liability, it says that if there was an action against the consortium, that each participant would pay based on their...
Population.
It's based on what they paid in for dues.
Yeah.
So that concerns me if there's some big law. I don't know why, like I guess everybody drank out of their water tanks and got poisoned, and it's very unlikely.
I mean, it's entirely possible. The dues are structured based on your population size and what your water demand is.
Yeah.
So how many service connections you have. But that associate membership, I'd have to look into more of what exactly that entails.
Yeah, so that, when I read through, that was my only concern, that it kind of, like if they get a full vote, then they're paying a lot lesser percentage if it was agreed on, you know, to cover the loss. It's section 14. Sorry.
I don't have it in front. I mean, I can make a note of it.
It's just a potential liability for the city, is why I'm asking.
Yeah, councillor, I'd have to take a closer look at that.
Yeah, I did. I threw you a cold one there. Anyway, that was my only thing, reading through this. The rest of it looks great.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Brooks?
I have a comment. I just, just for some background information, the mission change about the resource itself was resource-driven, and some of the things around watering and the raising awareness of watering, since we talk about that, has been so effective that some of the concerns about water shortages were mitigated by this group. So when we talk about impact and effectiveness of government work, I think it's really important to understand this. The other thing that I think's incredibly important to understand is some of the programs that they usually do at schools weren't able to do during COVID. However, during COVID, there were also the ice storms and all kinds of opportunities and the fire for agencies to work together. And the final thing that I think's important, and we've talked about before, but some of the councillors might not know, is that we also have an agreement for if there was a big emergency and people couldn't get to their various districts, that we can utilize employees in different areas that they can get to. This happened during the ice storm where one of the directors for the water department in their region couldn't get out of their cul-de-sac because a tree had fallen down, and so, and they did all these heroic measures to make sure that they kept the pump going in Lake Oswego when they were facing, they could have really, they came this close to losing their water. So the consortium really is that regional piece, and when I've gone to these other national organizational memberships, when the government agencies aren't working together, they're kind of all siloed and really competitive. So the final thing is it helps us too with negotiating, since we're the largest customer of bull run at this point besides Portland. So it's really important to understand those things. And what I would say too about the associate members is the advertising and things like that don't reach out there to, for their regions. So part of the reason why is they can be part of the teamwork without having all the direct benefits of being a member of the consortium. So that's the reason why that's kind of parsed out like that.
All right. Other questions or comments? So I have a motion, because with this one, we have to do our roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to read resolution number 5742-23, authorizing the city manager to sign amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to participate as a member of the Regional Water Providers Consortium by a title only.
Nothing, we have, it's not a title reading, it's just a roll call vote, right?
Oh, okay. To pass.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt resolution 5742-23, authorizing city manager to sign an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to participate as a member of the Regional Water Providers Consortium. Any discussions on the motion? So I'll start with roll call. Councillor Sacco?
Aye.
Councillor Hillier?
Aye.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Brooks?
Aye.
Councillor President Pratt?
Aye.
And then chair votes yes. Adopted unanimously. Item number two, consideration of the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Thank you, Rachel. Who's councillor talking about this? That's off. Don's not. Don's ill, so he's not here tonight.
Thank you, mayor. We met a couple weeks ago, and we interviewed several members of our community who are either reapplying to be part of the committee or are their new committee applicants. And like always, we have more than we can assign, or really, we really want everybody. Everyone seems to be great, and we're just very happy to have people in our community that are willing to volunteer and give their expertise. But yeah, I'm gonna have the other councillors read their names and make a comment about it.
Thank you, Councillor Reyes. So I'm going to start with the individuals that were appointed to the Architectural Review Board, and that is Skip Stanaway, Chris Gadel, Kylan Horner, and Keith Hancock.
And then we have for the Budget Advisory Committee, John Hanum, Chris Brune, and Mary Dirksen. For core area parking, we have Gary Haberman and Dr. Erin Welk. And then for the Library Advisory Committee, we have Sadvika Ladapu, who's, I believe, a student representative.
And again, we encourage those who are out there that to look at our website. There are some openings for some positions in these committees, so keep an eye on it, and if you didn't make it, just keep trying and look for opportunities to serve. Thank you.
I'd like to motion that we appoint the people that we listed as recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to items removed from consent. We had item number four removed from consent, and that's consideration of resolution number 5740-23, authorizing solid waste and restocking rate adjustments effective January 1st, 2024, and rescinding resolution number 5664-23. So I don't think staff has any presentation, so...
We don't know what the questions are. No, we have no presentation.
Okay, so Councillor Gonzalez?
It wasn't really a general question, more so after further consideration and reviewing their presentation last council meeting and seeing their processes, and very good, but in this instance, I am not going to vote for this to pass, so I'm going to vote no for this resolution based on my reevaluation of the information they presented, and also looking at future costs coming. I feel that this is going to be a burden on our low income, and at this time, I vote no.
We'll do a vote here in a minute.
Okay.
So I have a motion to adopt.
I motion that we adopt, oh, I gotta find it. Resolution number 5740-23, authorizing solid waste and recycling rate adjustments effective January 1st, 2024, and rescinding resolution number 564-23.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt resolution number 5740-23, authorizing solid waste and recycling rate adjustments effective January 1st, 2024, and rescinding resolution 5664-23. Any discussion on the motions? Is this a roll call or a voice vote? Since it's down to...
It's just a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's six to one. See, my math is better this time. All right. So that resolution is adopted on a vote of six to one. That brings us to council communications, and I'll start with Councillor Sacco.
Thank you. I just have one. We've had a couple prep meetings for the First Idea Committee, which we're going to kick off December 4th, so I wanted to let everybody know that that's coming. Really excited about that and excited to report back how the first meeting goes.
Thank you. Councillor Hillier?
I haven't attended any formal meetings, but I did attend Small Business Saturday and helped the economy and the small business that I speed shopped at. And I did want to just put out there a special congratulations to our Tuolatin Timberwolves football team. Second is, you know, we know Central Catholic cheated and hurt our best players, so it's really clear that we would have won otherwise. No, I'm kidding. The character of these young men and their coaching staff is just exemplary, and they represented our community really well. And I'm totally kidding about Central Catholic, although I did see that on a lot of Facebook posts, but anyway. And thank you to the chief, because I know you take a lot of extra time, and actually some of your other officers are also part of that staff, and we are really fortunate in our community to have such amazing examples for these young men, and I thank you.
Councillor Reyes?
No formal meeting, but yeah, I just want to remind people that there are, there's the Warehouse Community nonprofit that we have here in town, and they're still looking for household items and from silverware to, you know, eating utensils and things like that, that you can donate as you clear out your closet, your kitchen, your bedroom, or whatever it is that you're clearing out at home. I think that there are others that might be able to use those items, so drop them off there. It's right by Gyro area, where the Gyro sandwich area is. So make sure you, don't just throw them away, just call them or donate and get a tax-deductible receipt. So thank you very much for everything.
And it helps with the climate action play. Sure, go ahead.
One thing I did forget is that, and to Councillor Reyes's point, tomorrow is Giving Tuesday, and we have a lot of amazing nonprofits in our community that serve our community in so many different ways. And so I encourage folks who didn't overspend on any of the other days, hopefully you can focus on Giving Tuesday tomorrow.
Councillor Gonzalez?
I am the, I attended the Regional Tool Advisory Committee in lieu of the mayor as an alternate, and it was very interesting in this meeting that it was quite resounding that Paul Savis and of course, the Weston mayor were opposed to any of this plan, because obviously they showed us pricing models of four options. One thing that was quite evident that Paul Savis, our commissioner, was that when they discuss the kind of traffic problems that we're going to be experiencing, they use very ambiguous words such as small adjustments, small improvements, as if we have a plan, as if things are working smoothly and they're not. So Paul Savis wanted to make sure that it's going to be bad, call it what it is, and provide us with a plan. So that was very clear on his defense in trying to get a better plan in place for our residents. And for Mayor Rory, for West Lynn, when they, when he brought up Borland and Lamet, the only improvement they recommended is one flashing sidewalk, and that's it. When we have schools and hospitals, so basically pretty much nothing. One thing that was also evident is the ODOT team, they talked about that the mitigation plan for 205 is basically, the term they used was Travis from ODOT was blunt force plan for 205, unfortunately, is the plan they used, because traffic is pretty bad that this is what we have. They also talked about, there's no really perfect scenario, the scenarios they provided for us, also that ODOT is trying to reset the communication standards between all of us and provide us an opportunity for feedback. There was a lot there, but in short, the person overseeing the meeting did a good job keeping everything moving forward, so thank you.
Councillor Brooks?
All right, happy holidays, everybody. I attended the Arts Advisory Committee. We discussed a plan for the, there's been a group of artists that have been selected to present proposals for the Veterans Memorial or Veterans Plaza, and they're, so the, not just the Arts Advisory Committee, but there's an entire Veterans Committee that will be assessing the proposals. but there's an entire Veterans Committee that will be, um, assessing the proposals. And that will be coming up at the end of February. Um, we're really fortunate to have the quality of art artists that have, um, given their proposals. There's people that, um, have been selected that from the three, um, finalists, um, for each section. So there's a main section and then the two pedestals. And those, um, artists come to us from all over the country and have really impressive, amazing bodies of work. So keep your ears peeled and, um, if you see some people that you haven't seen before walking around the Commons around the end of February, it might be our guests. Other than that, I just, um, I know this is a busy time of the month, but, um, I know that some of us will be, um, looking out for the holiday lights. And just keep your eye on the website for all the things that are coming up for the holidays here in your city. And thanks to all the volunteers that helped hang lights and make the parade of lights happen, the story character reading happen, and all the other wonderful programming that we do as a city. It's, um, I'm very proud. Thank you.
Counselor President Pratt.
The only official meeting I attended was the first meeting of the Transportation System Plan, um, Community Advisory Committee. And, um, um, having, I was an alternate when we did this many years ago, and I think this is a much less nebulous group and will be more effective. And I was really impressed with the people at the table, how, um, they were really concerned about community input and making decisions based on that. Um, I'm going to bring up something I might be stealing your thunder here, Mayor, but the, um, State Tolling Committee meeting, that that's the state committee that's looking into this tolling pause. They, um, are going to be at Wilsonville City Hall at 5:00 PM on December 13th. As a city, we, the, is it the 14th? I'm sorry, the date got changed. It is the 14th. Um, as a city, we get three minutes total to speak, but, um, I'm planning to go there as a citizen and put my extra two minutes in, and I hope other people will do that too. So we can, um, gi- give our strong opinion to the people that, um, are looking into this. And then lastly, the, um, Holiday Lights Parade is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this weekend, so I hope everybody gets out and, um, SpongeBob will be the best one out there, but we will not be winning the prize, so.
All right. Uh, let's see, just a handful of meetings because of the holidays. Uh, Greater Portland Inc., the board met and had a discussion with the group that, um, was contracted to do, to do fundraising and raise membership in GPI. Um, they did not hit their goal. And so it basically was an after action report of why they couldn't hit their goal and the roadblocks they ran into in trying to attract more members to, uh, Greater Portland Inc. And, um, you know, it was a difficult time with financially for a lot of places. Uh, everyone's aware of the image that Tuolton has right now of Tuolton. God, no, nothing like Portland. The image of Portland has, um, in the region and how it's starting to come back. And, uh, but, you know, they have hope. There's a few big donors that might just still join, uh, given, you know, for next year because they're seeing Portland, uh, starting to come back. Um, but it was basically, you know, the, the board was very disappointed in the effort. Um, there was a lot, you know, with money spent, um, to do this fundraising. Uh, since they didn't reach their goal, they're not going to get their final fee uh, because that was built into the contract. So, um, we're hoping that, uh, lessons learned and, uh, you know, they'll start doing, maybe have a business development person in-house start reaching out and learning what, you know, what GP, what the, uh, this group found out and, you know, be able to make those connections that they weren't able to. Uh, the Small Cities Consortium, uh, Small Cities Consortium will be changing their meetings next year, in 2024. We're meet bimonthly instead of monthly, and we're going to switch to in-person. Um, and so these will follow, uh, mayor's, the Metro Mayor's Consortium meetings that are in-person and will also meet in downtown Portland for those that don't follow the MMC meetings because the feeling is that, uh, folks, uh, when it's on Zoom, sometimes they'll go, eh, I'll, I'll catch the next one versus attending it in person. So we can give this a shot because we're trying to increase participation in the Small Cities Consortium. Uh, very positive news is, uh, Greater Portland Inc. has initiated a Google ad campaign, again, to revamp Portland's image, and it's going very well. Uh, they're getting a lot of impressions, positive impressions, a lot of click-throughs. So people are still interested in the Portland metro region, and their education pieces are, uh, changing people's minds on what it really is like in Portland versus what they've heard in the media and what they see, uh, from other folks. Uh, the Metro Ma- Metro Mayor's Consortium met on the 16th. Uh, a big part of that meeting was the I-5 Bridge Replacement Update. They still are working out to the details on the design and the layout, uh, because they have to, you know, the two things they have to deal with is, one, there's an airfield, so the bridge can only be so high. And then they have to get ships under it so it can't be too low. They also have to deal, they were trying to take care of the people on Hayden Island, uh, to make it convenient to use the bridge. Um, they have committed, uh, each state, Oregon and Washington, has committed 1.1 billion dollars each towards the project. Uh, they're anticipating 1.2 billion dollars worth of tolls to be collected on both sides of the bridge, and they're looking at surge pricing on the bridge, not just a flat rate. Uh, and the challenge there is how are you going to administer that toll, uh, over two states, especially when, if you want to factor in, um, you know, toll assistance, lower income assistance for folks who can't afford the tolls. They are going to be asking, or still continue to ask for two and a half billion dollars from the feds. And they haven't gotten a solid answer if they're going to get that money or not yet. So they're going, um, for 2024, they're going to be hitting Washington DC pretty hard on our elected, uh, reps, uh, to see if they can get that two and a half billion, because if that doesn't come, the bridge isn't going to happen. Yeah, it's six billion right now, so it's only, it's only going up. Um, uh, what else? Last thing, two things was just the subcommittee. Uh, for those folks who do want to attend, it's in Wilson City, uh, Wilsonville City Hall. You will only have two minutes to present to the legislative subcommittee. So, uh, you're going to need to be concise, hit on one or two topics. What they're looking to hear from, uh, the things they want to hear about is the impacts to residents and diversion. They want to hear about impacts to retirement communities, and they want to hear, uh, how good or poor your public transportation is in the area. Those are three things they really want to hear about. So I don't think we'll have any lack of information for them on those three topics. Uh, and then, yeah, holiday lights, uh, first, second, and third, uh, starting from different points. Um, is it full yet, or do they still have room to register? Do you know? Had something up, okay. It's a lot of fun. They're starting the new, uh, mayor's prize for each night. City counselors can't win, sorry. Or their spouses. So it's additional pressure, you know, first I was, I was joking with Julie and Heidi about first, you know, I have to, you know, Cheryl and I have to do the kids' holiday, you know, costume contest. That's a lot of pressure and, uh, kids being disappointed. Now I'm going to have disappointed adults looking at me when their card doesn't win. But I guess that's part of the deal. We'll get over it. That's part of the deal being mayor, I guess. Uh, with that, that's all I have. Anything else? So I have a motion to close.
I'll make motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion as second to close this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Have a good evening. Thank you for listening and attending tonight. Bye-bye.